Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Flornoy.
Here.
Howley.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, before we move to our consent agenda, are there any changes for this evening? If not, we'll move to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from the December 14th council meeting, also approval of minutes from the January 4th special council meeting. We have approval of the 2016 mobile home licenses, a resolution of employment in the police department, a communications specialist, Caitlin Armstrong, at $18.23 per hour. We also have approval of a liquor license for the Dollar General store, and we have approval of claims in the amount of $669,597.37. You will see those pullout claims that are above $75,000, and Mike, those look like those are also associated with catwalk projects that are ongoing.
That's correct. Mayor's constructions for the airport and northwest for the rec center.
Great, thank you. So entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Moved by Anderson?
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Howley?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, counsel will move to our appearances and public forum. The first is Joan Harden. Is Joan here this evening? Joan?
Yes.
Can you come up to the podium, please, and identify yourself and where you live, and tell us what your concern is?
I'm Joan Harden. I live at 1008 South Second Street. It's the corner of Polk and Second. My petition today is concerning two separate yet similar issues. Both are relating to negotiating Second Street. Both are equally unsafe conditions that I've made complaints about and passed to either this office or the police department. I live at the corner of Polk and Second, make daily, if not multiple in a day, visits to my mother at Sunnybrook on Madison and Highland. Therefore, it's common for me to be either turning south onto or driving south on Second Street. Driving from East Madison, turning left onto Second Street, heading south toward my home routinely creates an issue. Parking is allowed on the west side of Second Street, all the way up and down, including that corner. More often than not, there will be a vehicle parked there within three or four feet from the corner. Now, Second's not that wide to begin with, and a stop sign is on traffic for the Second Street side, granting the right-of-way to Madison traffic. If a vehicle's at the stop sign heading north, it becomes a matter of making a turn into Second Street but pausing in the oncoming Madison lane to allow the stop sign vehicle to move, then zigging in to avoid the parked vehicle, and complete the turn onto Second. It's even more daring when it's icy. If that's not enough of a challenge, quite often, the parked vehicle is a semi truck. Thankfully, they've not bothered to bring their trailer, but it actually is quite large enough on its own. In Christmas week, I called the police department five times, asked them to move, you know, get it moved. The first call was two days after the truck was sitting there. I told, I was told, that they were allowed to have 24 hours before they had to move. I called every day, called once to the police chief with Dawn from here, and the semi remained parked within four feet of that corner for six days. Finally, it left. It came back two days later. Remained parked in the same position near the corner over New Year's week. I didn't attempt to call the police anymore and just waited for this forum. It's rather difficult to try to make that turn with both the semi and the icy conditions. After three days, it moved up to about 10 feet away from the corner. It still created a hazard, but you still had to wait, you know, for the Second Street oncoming traffic to move and get beyond the stop sign to complete the turn. But at least you could pause fully on Second Street. So this is really by no means safe. All on the street parking should be, like, limited to about 25 feet beyond that corner. There's a driveway about that distance, and that would be an excellent spot to put a sign designating this is the beginning of parking. Changing the stop sign to Madison or making it a four-way stop is not fixed. Even a four-way stop means if there's multiple cars lined up at Second Street, the same thing is going to continue to arise. The plight of the driver-owner of the semi can easily be addressed by just allowing them to mark in any of the public parking lots in town as long as they need to without, you know, paying for it. If they have to walk a few blocks or have someone ride, you know, them over, that's okay, too. Those rigs are too big to be parking on the street. It's a small town. I once, well, the one I've talked about is not the only one creating those difficulties. I've seen them, you know, in various places, and they make it difficult. You've got to go around them. The next dangerous hurdle on the Second Street obstacle course is the ensuing Harrison Street stop sign. As you approach that intersection, driving south, you stop at the stop sign. Then you've got to inch forward to get beyond this fence that's been erected around a huge pine tree on the street side. The fence is five feet away from the street because I measured it yesterday. Now, years ago, the pine tree's lower branches used to inhibit the ability to see, and when you're at that stop sign.
And you're looking east at that point?
You're looking east. So you're at the stop sign, looking east. There's a fence around this big pine tree that used to have branches all the way to the bottom, but somebody finally had the sense to cut the lower branches. Often, you could clearly see oncoming traffic, no problem. Sometime during past years, when I was temporarily living in another state, the homeowner erected a fence around the pine tree, essentially accomplishing the same visual impairment for the drivers with the lower branches. In the past year, the owner tore down the fence, within a few days rebuilt it in exactly the same pattern. So once again, visibility became obstructed. So at that point, I headed down here to complain. So why in all that guilty of common sense would this homeowner be allowed to rebuild a dangerous impediment? I was directed to Scott, for whom I left a message because he was out at the time. I called him later that day. He said he'd checked it out and agreed it was an issue. About a week went by, and there seemed to be nothing changing, so I called him again. This time, his response was a bit different. He and someone else had gone onsite to measure whether or not it was a problem and determined it was not. I strongly disagree. Multiple times a day, I have to slowly inch out into the intersection after stopping at the sign, hoping a vehicle heading west on Harrison is doing the speed limit until I can see beyond that fence. Scott mentioned on the follow-up phone call that I made to him that the homeowner had gotten a permit originally to build the fence, and it's now kind of grandfathered in, which is ludicrous. How is it possible to allow that to be built and then rebuilt? Not for nothing, but Polk Street's the size of an alley, because it really was one, and it bears the frequency of traffic that's appropriate to that alley. I was required to spend $250 appealing to this council three years back to install a 30-foot tall, 30-inch-tall wrought-iron fence, which was 20 feet from Second Street, but only six from Polk because it's an alley. And it could no way impair a visibility for the drivers, bike riders, pedestrians, or anything. It's see-through. So you'll remember, I had to fight really hard to get that, and it was accompanied with a serious caution. Make sure you do it on your land because we wouldn't want to make you dig it up and move it. And I understand and accept this was what the council felt necessary, assuring that I'd stay within the bylaws and not endangering fellow citizens or traffic. What I don't understand or accept is the notion that that fence around the pine tree on far faster-paced, heavily-trafficked Harrison, it is a dangerous situation, and it's allowed. The fence needs to be relocated around to the other side of the pine tree or removed altogether and straight panels installed to the base of the tree. It's not a big deal to accomplish this, and it'll create much-needed visibility. And that semi-driver returned over the weekend. I snapped some pictures of him yesterday, if anybody cares to see, and I guess he left this morning. But it's really difficult, and you can easily see by the pictures, there's not a lot of room. He's a big truck. So that's my issue. I need parking to be moved way away from that corner. I need somebody to make that fence go the other way or straight or something. I just want to be able to see.
Yeah, we understand for sure. I think many of us are familiar with that intersection. I think, let's address two issues. One is the semi tractor on the, on a relatively small street, narrow street, is something that definitely compromises what can be done at that corner. I guess my question is, how recent is it that that truck is there?
It was there yesterday. I got the picture.
I'm just saying, has the owner of that truck that we're aware of been, had it there for the past several years, or is this something relatively new, and is it a situation we expect to change?
Mr. Mayor, she called twice over a holiday weekend, with the complaint was that the semis were parked illegally. Officers went down both days, determined that there was actually legal parking there because there's no city ordinance that addresses larger vehicles parking in certain places. There was nothing really they could do. And Ms., I'm sorry, Harden, if I said your name wrong, I apologize.
No, that's right.
I talked to her Monday after the holiday. She was very understanding. When I explained to her, I looked up the two cases and why the officers hadn't. I did explain to her that we do have extended parking, that I would have an officer go down that Monday and mark the vehicle because the complaints before were that they were illegally parked. The officer went down there Monday, marked the vehicle, plus put a red tag warning on it that will be towed after 48 hours. It's moved. Actually, I checked it today, and it's moved today, so he's moving it. Under our city ordinance, there's nothing else we can do.
Okay. So what, for that particular issue and for the parking and where it will extend to, we would refer that to our Public Safety Committee to review.
Okay.
So that would be the next, the next step in this one, and Katie, if you would get your committee to look at that, and then also if there is some interest in reviewing our ordinance for large vehicles parked on city streets.
Well, it's not even large vehicles. Any vehicle there is an impediment, any one of them.
No, we understand that. We understand that. Yeah, so both situations will be reviewed. If it is, if the parking is too close to the corner and it is dangerous to make a turn, that'll be reviewed along with the size of the vehicles that are parked there.
Okay.
Isn't, isn't our city ordinance specify parking cannot be any closer than 10 feet away from the corner, and usually that's defined by the sidewalk, is it, rather than the actual cross street? Say, say where I park over on Briggs.
It's usually defined by where the stop sign is placed, if there's no sidewalk.
Okay, so if the site, if the stop sign's there, you cannot park any closer than 10 feet to that, that particular location?
But if, yeah, exactly. If it's determined.
And that would cause for a ticket. I mean, you would, you would get an illegal parking ticket, which is.
Well, the first two times I called, I never ever said it was illegal. I said it was parked there and making a problem, and whoever wrote that down, wrote it incorrectly. And so when they went to look at it, they should have been able to see that. It was four feet from the street. I mean, it was like right on the sidewalk. Practically. I mean, it was right off.
Without seeing a ma'am, all I can determine is both, two different officers went and said it was, and I know there's definite problem there. If City Council does want to put parking from, because there are a lot of vehicles to park on the west side.
Yeah, it's a really easy fix. Put a sign there, make it from that part on, no problem. I'm not trying to do away with parking on the street at all. I just don't want to have a problem and get into a wreck. I mean, when it's icy, it's unbelievable over there. You know, because I got to move, or the stop sign guy is just sitting there, and what am I going to stop traffic behind me on Madison? Maybe if nobody's there, okay. But that's not always the case, so.
Okay, so we'll, we'll go ahead and review that through Public Safety, and then you'll be, you'll be alerted when that committee meets and can, can discuss it with them as well. Maybe ask some of your neighbors to attend that meeting as well so that they can, we can get their input.
And if you could bring pictures to that meeting, that would be helpful.
That's enough, if you'd like.
And then your second issue regarding the sight line, and I think I'll ask our city administrator to address that.
Sure. So, thank you, Mayor. And I'm actually going to ask Daryl Biscart, our Streets Superintendent, to speak about it. He went out there and measured some of the sight distances under the DOT guidelines, and he can sort of speak to what the safe sight distance is at that intersection.
If you'll yield the mic to him, then, great.
Like Mike said, the suggested sight distance for intersections in town on a 25 mile-an-hour speed limit. I went to where to talk to Frank Reddicker at the DOT, and there's measurements. You go from back of curb, back 18 feet in, in the middle of the interstate, or inner, of the lane that you're in, and that's about approximately where the driver would sit, and you look, would be to your left, would be eastbound. This, this is supposed to be 312 feet, you can see. Well, you can, at that point, you can nudge up to that intersection and see 312 feet, but you have to get beyond the stop sign. And that's the suggested sight distance that they have. You can get up to that without being in the oncoming traffic in that westbound lane.
Thanks, Sarah, but you do have to move forward. It's not the natural point where a car would stop.
Yes, you have to go forward past the stop.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate that. And Mike, I guess the, the issue with the fence itself in terms of its legality is that it met setbacks, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
I think, Mayor, this issue entirely should be discussed at Public Safety. That'd be my recommendation. There's a series of issues here that I think we could look at from a public safety standpoint at that time.
Okay, great. So we'll, we'll take all of those up at that time. We appreciate you coming tonight and bringing those before us. I'll mention also that the tree itself was, when it was itself an obstacle, the property owner at that time was advised to trim the trees up. So we, that's, that's been an issue for some time, and I wasn't aware that there was a fence out there at this point. Okay, next, we'll move Steve Beeman from Collected Cars Unlimited. Steve, we're impressed that you're again here to see us early for your car show later in the year.
Yeah, we're trying to get the flyers to print, so I'm just waiting for confirmation for the date. Anyway, we're here to ask for use of the square again for our 30-some-odd annual car show, September 18th.
September 18th, okay.
We're same as the previous years, the square, and then the street's off the side of it.
Yes, and you, I know you had another successful day this year, and.
Yeah, we did. 160 cars, plus minus.
Wow, great.
That's a lot.
Fantastic.
Move to approve.
And, okay, move to approve September 18th for the Collected Cars Unlimited Show. Moved by Howley.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Next, Dan Sullivan from Cambridge Investment Resources.
Good evening. I'm Dan Sullivan, obviously from Cambridge, as well as living town here on Harrison Avenue. We're here to talk, or I'm here to give a little bit of feedback from our perspective at Cambridge of one of the issues that have been on the docket, which is the paving of the parking lot at the new Park and Rec facility. First off, I want to make sure you're all aware of that Cambridge has been a solid supporter, not only of the Park and Rec, but other events and other structures around here. So this is not necessarily a complaining-type issue, but it's kind of an awareness of what we would hope would have played out. Obviously, we're a donator to the original funding of the Park and Rec. In addition, when we realized there was a gap in the funding relative to the parking lot, which some decisions were made based upon saving budget, which the decision was, I believe, to do the gravel parking lot, Ed and a few others reached, Mike reached out to us to determine if we would be an additional donor relative to increasing our contribution relative to making that a possibility. While we want to be a good community citizen, we also want it to be a community decision, not just a Cambridge decision to do all these things. So we did step up and made a commitment to do a fair amount of that. In addition to that, just so you have a conundrum, we also had a separate line, which had some other items that need to be done, like a signage on the, on Burlington that we committed completely to. So it, I guess, we're back to what happened or what played out, and I want to encourage you, I guess, this evening again to reconsider and vote positively for it. And I think there's been, some of that gap has been filled, but at the same time, even if it hadn't been filled, we all have to work within budgets. And I think this budget was somewhere $160,000 or $70,000, anywhere within $10,000. Hopefully, the decision might have been to find the $10,000 and something else within the facility that might have been not as significant, but at least played a role in allowing you to do the, do the parking lot. Because I think the other piece of this is, it's not just about the appearance piece of it. It's really about the maintenance piece of it, in my mind. I think if you had a gravel lot, and that's going to be one of your primary entrances, we probably would have spent $10,000 a year in extra cleaning, and certainly the maintenance or the wear on the facility probably would have been far greater than if you have a clean entrance and a, a better opportunity to get in without that type of mess that you would have, especially at a time like this in the year. So I think that's, you know, one of the big things is reconsidering, trying to bring balance to everything you do. And I think that's what we're here, to try to support, but at the same time, be a partner in supporting and not just the support as you reach out to us for this and other things in the future. So I don't know if you have any questions, but I think that's really, we're, we're a good supporter of all the events here. We think this is a critical part to have as part of our marquee, I think, as we try to bring new employees to the, to the area. All the cultural things and athletic things that you have here are one of the reasons people will relocate. You know, civic centers are viable part of the community at this point. It's built almost every day. You know, the athletic piece of it, I think, is extremely important, so we're, we're here to support all those types of things. And I think the last thing is, when you have supporters like us and a few of the other people, not just reach out, but share, you know, reach out to us if you have concerns so we don't end up in the dilemmas perhaps we're at at this particular point, so we can get maybe more open communication about what some of the resolutions would be that is more compromisable as opposed to strictly, you know, voting on them at a stress point where everybody has to say yes or no. So.
Thanks, Dan. Yeah, I think that's where, that's where we were in late December, was that it was felt that we needed to give the contractors a yes or no, an up or down answer on which direction we were going with the parking lot. Since that point in time, some of this colder weather has set in, and nobody's going anywhere, so it's allowed us a little bit more time to finish the fundraising. At the time, we were short $89,500, and that was the additional money on top of what the council had pledged towards a gravel parking lot.
$8,900.
Well, and then at that point in time, so Cambridge has, has stepped up and pledged $50,000 towards that, and at the time, we also had a pledge from the McMahon family of $30,000. So we were $9,500 short. Since that time, we do have written pledges securing the balance of that $9,500, $4,500 from one donor, $5,000 from another donor. So that entire amount that was a shortfall, or, or what was, in addition to the council's pledge towards gravel, has now been fulfilled. So hopefully, the council will look at that favorably and, and vote for the, the paved lot. But thank you for coming tonight, and again, we were delivering messages during the last meeting, so we really appreciate you being here and, and talking about your support of the project and understanding about some of the decision process that we had to go through. Counsel, any questions for Dan at this time?
No.
Okay. So we'll move to our resolutions and action items, and that, counsel, would be, again, to consider the change order from a gravel parking lot to a paved parking lot, which was change order number 49, which would create a, a concrete parking lot. So I'd have emails in support of the final amounts that have been pledged to cover the entire cost that we would need for a concrete parking lot. So any, any questions on that before we take a, a motion either way?
Just to clarify, so at this point, city spending, if we vote for this, is spending the same as what we would for gravel, and the funding, the balance for the, for achieving a paved parking lot is paid privately?
Correct.
Okay. So no additional funding from the city? And also, lower maintenance costs year to year, because obviously, concrete's easier to maintain than gravel. Something I didn't bring up before was ADA compliance. Gravel parking lots are not ADA, they don't meet ADA requirements. I don't think we want people in wheelchairs having to be pushed through a gravel lot. So that's something we're trying to increase ADA access at all city facilities, including this one. So even if we were back in the point where we didn't have the $9,500 in hand, but now we do, this is a great reason, another great reason to do this. But I can't see a downside. Any other counselors want to speak on this issue?
I certainly see the advantage of, you know, of, I mean, I felt badly in the sense that I was one of the people that voted no. However, when we didn't know for sure that we had that additional funding, I, you know, I really was concerned about it. And as I say, I certainly realize the benefit of being able to have a paved area rather than doing the gravel. But, you know, sometimes, things that we want, we have to be sure that we have the funding for. And now that it seemingly has fallen into place, I certainly have no problem in saying, you know, it will be the way to go. I mean, I certainly have an understanding of the, of the reason and the benefit of it, but it makes me feel much better now than it did in December. Sorry.
I respect that.
Thanks, Martha. Okay.
I do have one, one clarification, I think, on my point of view on this. We had relied upon grant money to be able to build that parking lot in the first place, and we had done it as a gamble, because grant money is a gamble. You either get it or you don't. When we were fortunate enough to receive funding from the USDA Rural Development for our sanitary sewer extension from the plant to Lamson Woods, that did away with that portion of grant funding that was there. So it was left to whatever the budget was for over at the rec center in order to take up what it was going to be for parking facilities out there, because again, that was grant funding that never materialized. And so the first proposal, which I was really dead-set against, was taking money from the utility fund, which is within, within the legal limits of the city to be able to do that. But I felt that that money was generated and put away for a specific reason, and to take it away and use it for something else meant that you weren't fulfilling a promise that you had made to the people that were paying their bills regularly. And so I felt very strongly against doing that, and that's why I voiced my no at that particular point in time. The second vote that came up, the fact that we were still short on funding, and I know that we have very dire financial situations that we are rectifying, we are going to take care of, we are moving forward on, but it still left me feeling uncomfortable that we would have a problem trying to meet some of those obligations if we were to use money that we hadn't earmarked for anything prior to that. With knowing now that the funding is complete, that it will be completely paid for without having to draw on money either from the utility fund or from local option sales tax, I feel that I could go ahead and vote for it this time in order to make it go forward. But that is the thinking that I had in the process prior to this. I wasn't trying to be obstinate. I wasn't trying to be a roadblock in anybody's way. I just had come to the, to the feeling in myself that when you rely on grant funding that's not guaranteed at the time that you want to rely on it, you shouldn't do that. That, that should be something that the city doesn't do as a first line of funding for projects that it works on. We should never operate under the assumption that, okay, if we start something, then we could get a grant, and that would complete it, because.
could get a grant, and that would complete it, because it's a gamble. And in this case, it was a hundred and eighty thousand dollar gamble, at minimum, for a paved parking lot over there. The parking lot that was planned was more grandiose than that, and it was going to be part of clean water funding in order to do it. So, so I just wanted to clarify what my stance was on this.
Well, I would welcome a motion to approve. If you'd like.
I'm not going to.
All right. Sorry. Entertained a motion to approve the change order, number forty-nine, for the parking lot. Moved by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Any other discussion? Now, please call the roll.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, counsel, I appreciate that. Next, we'll move on to the authorizing of the engineering services agreement for the paving of the Recreation Center parking lot, so that we can get ready to begin that process once the weather permits us to get in there again.
Move to approve.
Moved by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Hallie.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Next, counsel, we have a legal services agreement, and I was going to ask John Morrissey. John, are you going to speak about that?
I will.
Thanks.
I don't usually show up on these, because they're not usually like this one. This is a little different situation.
It covers the kitchen, everything in the kitchen sink.
Right. What USDA wants done is part of about a seventy thousand dollar professional services package. Aylers Firm in Des Moines, our public finance firm, will do about six-sevenths of that, and I will do the title work. I had a lengthy conversation with the USDA Rural Development Administrator that's keeping track of our Step One loan and grant, about if they really meant what they said in this agreement, because it varies. I haven't had to do title opinions like USDA Rural Development wants on this one since back in the eighties, when we did the UDAG, and I'd spent two days in Des Moines in the Secretary of State's office, actually looking at original documents for rail mergers and things like that, for our rail spur and our water tower UDAG grants. So, what they want is that I give them opinions, and on the second page of this, if you have it on your tablets, there is a note in the middle of the page that says, "Abstract reviews are not acceptable." That's contrary to Iowa Title Standards, the Iowa Bar Association Real Estate Committee standards, the Iowa Court Law, and the Iowa statute, which all say we have what we call marketable title acts of making titles good after there's forty clear years shown by an abstract of title. We're one of two states left in the country that does it the old-fashioned way with abstracts of title, with opinions about the validity of the title based on what's in your abstract. It's not what USDA Rural Development wants, they want me to do it the way they do everywhere else in the country, which means I build a book based on what you have in your properties. So, you've all seen this map that we're working with, as far as Lila Williams, Meyer's property, the Conger property, the Holt's property, the Hamlin property we just acquired, and so forth, all the way over. We've got sixteen different easements on seven different property owner sites. They want me to take each property owner's title and make a separate booklet on it, as far as all of the deeds that go back in that, what they call chain of title, and have the actual documents there to support it. And then, for each of the easements, comment on whether this particular easement falls completely within the documents that I found for their chain of ownership. It will end up with the same conclusion that you would have from an abstract of title, is my belief, but they want me to do it the old-fashioned way, so to speak. I talked with the USDA representative about the fact, this could make this twice as expensive and much more bulky than we're used to, as far as the opinions we give you. I will still have about five different things I certify when we get done with this, including having your city officers sign a certificate that they own all this, and certifying that they have the authority to take the positions they are, and then that goes into a bigger book, that the Aylers Firm is going to make on the public finance for the grants and loans. But to do this, I estimated about a twelve thousand dollar figure, which is honestly about twice as much as I think my time would be otherwise, but I'm going to do it the way they want it. In talking with Sherry Rice, the administrator on this for Rural Development, she said, "Well, they very much are going to appreciate that we don't have some of the arguments they've had over this, where you waste time, basically, on getting to the real process, which is the bidding that'll come up within a month, and just get this done, instead of arguing about fine points about whether this is the way the law is supposed to work or not." So, I'll do their opinions, and I want you to understand, though, that when you have a bill on this, there's more in this than you're used to, as far as the title opinions from me. And other than that, I've assured her that I think I can get this done, so you guys stay on track by early February, when you want to have some of your bidding documents and your hearings taking place about those documents. And she was fine with that timeline, but there will be quite a bit of documentation that goes into that, if I do it for sixteen easements. That's what this is about. It's, it's a bigger contract than I would bring to you ever, I guess, frankly, for a title opinion, but that's what's going on. So, if you have any questions, that's as clear as I can explain it.
Thank you, John. I mean, I think we understand that, you know, we, we have to satisfy the federal government for the opportunity to receive millions of dollars in grants, so I think for that sacrifice, we're willing to understand, so we do appreciate that. Entertained a motion, then, to approve the legal services agreement.
Move to approve.
Moved by Rasmussen.
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Next, counsel, we have some review and consideration for our financial proposals. Mike, if you can bring us up to speed on that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, this proposal that's in your packet is the interim financing arrangements that has been received by us from Travis, Travis Squires, our Piper Japp group representative. Basically, this is the construction loan that is necessary and required by USDA to complete the conveyance portion of our project. So, the terms from Midwest One include a short-term borrow for two years at two-point-one percent, and an April closing, right now. So, what our bond counsel has advised us is for the counsel to authorize me to enter into negotiations with Midwest One, and to execute the documents necessary to either accept or reject that financing, if more advantageous financing is found in the interim. And basically, what that boils down to is the closing date. We don't want to borrow four-point-two million dollars in April and pay interest costs on it, if our construction won't happen, perhaps, until late fall. And so, that's basically what we want to make sure we're doing, is borrowing the money, excuse me, when it makes sense for the city. And so, I've provided a motion for counsel to consider if they would be willing to do so.
All right. I have the motions all read, and it's kind of lengthy, but bear with me. All right. So, a motion to receive the January eleven, two thousand sixteen commitment letter from Midwest One, and authorize the city administrator to negotiate the terms of the commitment letter with Midwest One, and to execute such documents as necessary to accept the proposal from Midwest One, with such revisions, additions, and deletions as deemed necessary and appropriate by the city administrator, or to reject the commitment letter from Midwest One, if other financing is available to the city on more favorable terms, as determined by the city administrator.
Okay.
That's the motion.
I think that's fairly clear. Is that a motion?
I don't know that.
Motion to approve. Okay. Moved by Flornoy to approve the letter.
I'll provide you the copy, Joe.
I think I've got it in my email.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Okay. Any other discussion? Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next, counsel, who will be awarding the bid for the Kirkwood paving project, and as you'll see, oh, hi, Melanie. Welcome back.
Thank you very much.
Happy New Year, congratulations.
Thank you. So, the bid that you have in your packet is for Kirkwood, from Seventh to Ninth. This is a DOT-ledged, led project. Let's see what else you need. The engineer's estimate for this was two-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand. The four bids were received. The low bid was from J&amp;L Construction, they're out of Washington, Iowa. The bid was two-fifty-nine, five-hundred-and-fifty-seven, and seventy-six cents. Number two was Hewer Construction, at two-seventy-nine, one-twenty-nine, fifty-seven. Third was Jones Contracting, at two-eighty-three, seven-seven-seven. And the high bid was for Cunningham, at three-fifty-two, three-seventy-eight, ninety-eight. So, with J&amp;L being just slightly over the engineer's estimate, we'd recommend that you award it to them. This is a DOT-funded project, so you have eighty percent of that is coming from the state, and twenty percent is locally funded.
Okay. Thanks, Melanie. So, counsel, your recommendation, then, is going to be to the Iowa DOT to award the So, entertain a motion to approve J&amp;L Construction as the bid award and recommended to the Department of Transportation.
So, moved.
Moved by Flornoy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Hallie. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Hallie.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Hamilton.
I will abstain, on the grounds of my employment with the Iowa Department of Transportation.
Anderson.
Yes.
Okay. So, we have a majority vote, so we will make that recommendation. Next, counsel, we have the second reading of ordinance eleven thirty-six, which is the ADA Accessible Parking at Howard Park. This is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing at this time, and ask if there's any public comment on the ordinance. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and ask the counsel for approval to move this from the second to the third reading.
Move to approve.
Moved by Hallie. Second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. I have nothing in the mayor's report this evening. We'll move to our committee reports, Environmental Franchise Utilities Committee.
Yes, we met this evening, John was on the phone, and we met with Scott Tim, and discussed, I guess I would say, and what we were anticipating in terms of looking down the road, and I think one of the main things that we discussed was the situation with our trees and our tree planting project, and what grants might be available, and we discussed water quality, and as I say, we also sort of touched on a concern regarding smoking in our parks, but I think that was kind of put on hold for the time being. And, as I say, I think probably the main discussion that we had with Scott was our tree projects, and the overall view of the city in terms of replacement regarding those with, you know, the ash disease, and certainly, working with the Park Department in terms of tree replacement. So, that basically was primarily what we did.
Great. Thank you, Martha. Thank you, and I think we'll get a chance to dig into that a little bit deeper when we do our work session with committees.
Exactly.
Thank you. Next, then, Property Committee, is there a report?
Yes. There was a fundraising opportunity that's been brought to the Director of the Library for the Masons to sponsor bingo at the library. Bingo is, of course, a gambling, and it comes down to that it is legal to be able to do that, there, there are no laws on the books that say that you cannot have that in a public facility. It has been done in other communities, but we still have some questions as a committee as to how it would operate. Would it be during business hours, or after business hours? How often would this be something that would be done? The purpose of it would be to allow this to happen, and fifty percent of the proceeds would go to purchasing materials for the library, and fifty percent of the proceeds would go back to the players who are there participating in bingo, as cash award prizes. And so, that does make it a gambling enterprise, you have to have a gambling license in order to do that. The Masons would be the ones that would purchase that license, and do it under their auspices, but it's felt that they want to do it in the library.
I wondered, are they willing to do it anywhere else, if not?
That was another question, that was another question that came up, and since we didn't have our library director here at the meeting, she was invited, and we did not have a representative from the Masons, we could not get those questions answered, so we're going to table it for a further investigation by the committee at this point in time.
Okay. Thanks, Eric, interesting request. All right. Mike, do you have anything to report this evening?
Nothing this evening, there.
Okay. Great. So, we've come to the end of our meeting, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Second by Hallie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.